Good afternoon. That is the strongest response we've had this entire special session. The hour of convening has arrived and the Senate will now come to order to ask that all unauthorized persons exit our beautiful chamber. It continues to be my honor to represent your ties crooked, very crooked. Continue to be honored to recognize the well-dressed honorable Rules Chairman.
Mr. President, thank you so much and thank you for leading our state and we appreciate all you do on behalf of the people of Georgia. A moment in history, the Senator from the first told me it was National Rural Health Day. So we want to commend all the work that we do in this chamber for healthcare. Also, Johnny Mercer, 1909, was born in Savannah today, back then, and he went on to be a pioneer in the music industry and is member of the Hall of Fame. Also some birthdays to note. Atlanta and born at Georgia Baptist, 1944, Daphne Stevens, along with two Moore twins. A Democrat, Missy Moore, and Republican Angelique Moore, and also Terry Lindell. And it's just birthday all over the place. But Mr. President, the birth that I appreciate is the one that I have by being in a senate body with so many reputable and exciting people, even as Senator from the 24th. The journal's been read and found to be correct, Mr. President.
You outdid yourself today. That's probably your best performance so far. Very informative. Thank you. Is there objection dispensing with the reading of the journal? The Chair hears none and the reading of the journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the journal? The Chair hears none and the journal is confirmed. All senators who have bills and resolutions, please bring them to the Secretary's desk at this time. Secretary will now read reports of standing committees.
Mr. President, the Senate Committee on reapportionment redistricting has had under consideration the following legislation. As instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. SB 2 EX, due passed by substitute respectfully submitted Senator Kennedy of the 18th District Chair. Mr. Secretary, pursuant to Senate Rule 2-1.6, I hereby give notice that I will introduce a minority report to be read along with the majority report on Senate Bill 2 EX submitted by Senator Gloria Butler, District 55. That completes the order.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read bills and resolutions for the second time?
Senate Bill 2 EX by Senator Kennedy, the 18th and others, Georgia Congressional Redistricting Act, enact. That completes the order.
Alright, it's now time for our afternoon roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? Any motion? There we go. Recognize the Senator from the 33rd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 16th, 38th, 26th for business outside the Capitol.
Without objection, the Senators from the 16th, 38th, and 26th are excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from Perry, Georgia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 11th for business inside the Capitol.
Without objection, the Senator from the 11th is excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 28th.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 25th for business outside the Capitol.
Without objection, the Senator from the 25th is excused. The Chair recognizes the pro tem.
Mr. President, I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 3rd if she has not already been requested. Thank you.
Without objection, the Senator from the 3rd is excused. The Chair recognizes the majority whip.
Permission to excuse the Senator from the 14th, please.
Without objection, the Senator from the 14th is excused. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 48th. She waves. Any other additional motions to excuse? The Chair sees none. The Secretary will call the role of Senators. Signify your presence by voting the a switch. The Secretary will unlock the machine. Alright, it's now time for afternoon devotional. I ask that all senators take your seats, cease all audible conversations, and ask that our doorkeepers secure the chamber at this time. I'd like to recognize the Senator from the 28th to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and to introduce to us our Chaplain of the Day.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our state's flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag, the principles to which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation, courage.
Good afternoon, everyone. It gives me great honor today to bring a pastor from home, Reverend Dr. James Ellison. We call Jimmy. He's the pastor of Noonan City Church, which is the church of my brother and my sister-in-law and his family, their family. This church was founded in January of 2017 and is part of the Free Methodist Church denomination. Pastor Ellison also serves as CEO of Restoration ATL. This is an urban ministry he founded in 2013, which provides spiritual programming for women and children that are transitioning out of homelessness in Atlanta. And they've served over 3,000 women and children in some of the most prominent homeless shelters around Atlanta, such as the City of Refuge, the Atlanta Mission, and Solomon's Temple. Pastor Ellison holds an Associate Arts Degree from Religious, I'm sorry, Associate of Arts Degree in Religious Studies from Young Harris College, Bachelors of Arts in Religion from La Grange College, and also got his degree in Theology of Emory University's Camler School. This was his Master's Divinity Degree. And then he went on to receive his Doctorate of Ministry Degree at the Asbury Theological Seminary in 2005. He has actually authored two books, Broken to Broken, which is Broken to Broken: Urban Missions as a Path to Spiritual Growth, and It's Your Move: Life Lessons from the Game of Checkers. He's married to the former Beth Parish. Beth is sitting right over here, and they have two sons, Will and Ben. And I first came to know Pastor Jimmy through just kind of seeing him throughout the community and obviously with my brother going to that church. But when, y'all remember back when the EF4 tornado ripped through my home county and through my home city of Noonan? You know, I was out delivering food to folks and going around and came up to Pastor Jimmy's church and there he was, had his members activated. They were getting out in the community, delivering food by foot, by car, however they could get it out there. And they were just doing wonderful things and they are still to this day doing work around our community, getting trees out of people's yards, getting the root balls out of people's yards, doing all this, the things the insurance doesn't cover. And all that, I think, comes from his leadership. But one of the main reasons I asked Pastor Jimmy here today was, if you remember back right before the pandemic, I had my childhood preacher up here, Dr. Gene Tyer. Gene Tyer, if you remember correctly, he married me, he baptized me, and was just a great man and I did a resolution for him, honoring 60 years. Well, I was, he actually passed away a few months back and I was at the funeral and I didn't know this, but Pastor Jimmy actually had been pastoring my pastor for the last several years since they lived down the street. And when I saw Pastor Jimmy get up there and give the eulogy for this great man that I love and respect, I decided right then, I gotta have this guy as my next pastor of the day. And so today is that day. So Pastor Jimmy, come on up here and give these folks some religion.
Friends, I bring you greetings from the Southeast Region Conference of the Free Methodist Church, from our Bishop, Bishop Keith Coward, our Superintendent, the Reverend Mike McAvoy, and the wonderful people of the Noonan City Church located in the heart of downtown Noonan. Lieutenant Governor Duncan, Senator Brass, members of the Georgia State Senate, thank you for the privilege of serving as Chaplain of the Day in the State Senate. I'm honored and grateful to stand before you this afternoon and address such a distinguished group of servant legislators. As leaders of our great state, you have an audacious task before you. I don't need to remind you that the decisions you make will impact Georgia in ways that we cannot comprehend. This assembly will impact 10.8 million individuals who call Georgia home and who have entrusted you with the well-being of their families. You carry a great responsibility that covers almost 58,000 square miles and reaches to Brastown Blough, as well as the shores of beautiful Savannah, to below the Natline and beautiful Jessup. May God guide you and bless you as you fulfill your work for the people of our great state. Listen now to a reading from Proverbs. Listen, children, to a father's instruction. Pay attention and gain understanding. I give you sound learning, so do not forsake my teaching. When I was a boy in my father's house, still tender and an only child of my mother, he taught me and said, "Lay hold of my words with all your heart. Keep my commands and you will live." Get wisdom, get understanding. Do not forget my words or swerve from them. Do not forsake wisdom and she will protect you. Love her and she will watch over you. Wisdom is supreme. Therefore get wisdom. Friends, the grass will wither and the flower will fade, but the word of our Lord will stand forever and ever. This afternoon, I want to echo Solomon's words. Wisdom is supreme. Therefore get wisdom. My main point in our short devotion is simply this. Practicing godly wisdom will change your life for good. I believe attaining wisdom is the key to a well-lived life. More than strength, more than courage, more than power, I pray God grants you wisdom during this session. Based on your past experiences, based on your current circumstances of our state, and based on your future hopes and dreams you have for the people of Georgia, I pray you ask yourself prior to each vote, what is the wise decision for Georgia and the people who call her home? Oh God, grant me wisdom today. Wisdom, it is a gift from God. I've come to believe that true wisdom and discernment comes only from our Father. I have come to appreciate wise people. I'm sure you have too. Most of us can name one or two, perhaps three people within our lives who have and practice wisdom and discernment. I'm constantly amazed at how God surrounds me with godly people who love God and who share their wisdom with me. In my 53 years on this earth, wise counsel has taught me what I've come to know as truths along this journey we call life. No matter the circumstances in which we find ourselves, no matter the challenges or the joys we face, wisdom and discernment affirm three basic truths. One, life is worth living. Life is a gift from God, something to be treasured, not abused. A life fully lived is found in serving others and daily growing into a better person. Life is worth living. Number two, people are worth loving. There are those who will lie, who will cheat, who will hurt, and yes, still as a whole, people are worth loving. To share in a healthy relationship with a spouse, a child, a parent, a friend, or a neighbor is truly a gift and worth the risk of love. The very core of humanity is good and decent. Err on the side of grace. Err on the side of believing in people. People are worth loving. And lastly, God is worth trusting. When life and people disappoint, God is faithful. When our minds can't comprehend the whys in life, we have a hand in which to place ours, the hand of God, and God is worth trusting. At the end of the day, wisdom and discernment will remind you, life is worth living, people are worth loving, and God is worth trusting. My prayer for you this day is that you, like Solomon, will ask God to grant you wisdom and to give you a discerning heart. Let us pray. God of grace and God of glory, own thy people for thy power. Crown thine ancient church's story, bring her bud to glorious flower. Grant us wisdom, grant us courage for the facing of this hour, for the facing of this hour. Amen.
Senate will come back to order. Are there any unanimous consents? The Chair sees none. Does any Senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? A lot. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 2nd for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. It gives me great honor to recognize a great citizen of the state, a great American, and a person that saves lives. Today, we honor Michelle Taylor Willis, an entrepreneur, author, speaker, radio talk show host, and television producer. Yes, she has many accomplishments, a mother of four, but where I know her best is she saves lives. 11 years ago, she entered the hospital and wanted to have a water bath birth. And because she had a C-section prior, they told her no. And she said, "Why not?" Knowing that Georgia is the leading state in maternity deaths and mortality deaths for pregnant women, she stood up, fought that issue. Five years later, the policies for all the hospitals across Georgia now give water bath births because we know that births in water baths save lives, it's good for the mother, it's good for the child. Her, along with Dr. Brady, started a policy with hospitals, with doctors, to put water baths in hospitals to help save lives. Today, as we recognize November 18th, 2021, as Michelle Taylor Willis Day at Georgia State Capitol, we would like to take time out to say thank you for your service to the least of us, to the disterns franchise, and to the voiceless for making this state a great place where it should be. Ms. Michelle Willis, thank you.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of y'all have noticed that Sheila McNeil has not been here for a good many days and I've tried to talk to her every day to find out what's going on. Her husband, and I really feel bad about it, I didn't even realize, didn't know his name until yesterday. I had to ask her. His name's Arlie. But she went home earlier this week. He got admitted to the hospital in Brunswick with intestinal blockage. And he still has that intestinal blockage as of today and I talked to her a few minutes ago. They have now postponed the surgery until Monday, but don't see any signs of anything happening until you have surgery. So if y'all would, we could please rise for a moment of silence for Sheila and Arlie, please. Thank you.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 53rd, the Rules Chairman, for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to talk about the day we had yesterday. Well, first off, let me start by saying, in honor of Josh McCoon, I come back to the well. Yesterday was Native American Day in Liberty Plaza. Several of us, Senator from the 4th, Senator from 24th, the 51st, and several House members, we got to experience an amazing celebration. In fact, it was spiritual. It was uplifting. It was amazing. When we, in fact, one part, when we gave the resolution to the Cherokee chief, he walks up and two red-tailed hawks fly above the twin towers, over Liberty Plaza, and circles, comes by the Capitol, circles again, very comes by the Capitol, circles again, very quietly and amazingly, and then they go over the twin towers and disappears. I have never seen that before, ever, seen a red-tailed hawk here. But two of them came out and flew together for that ceremony. And I was touched, in more ways than one, but I was touched. And in fact, after the ceremony, I asked the Cherokee chief, I said, I have never seen that, have you? He pulled his hat off, and he had a feather from a hawk, and he said, they were honoring us today. So you missed an incredible ceremony. That would have really enlightened you and had taken you to new places, and I feel that that happened to me. So, Mr. President, we're going to make it a yearly event during the session, so I ask that everybody participate in that in the following session coming up, and thank you so much. Mr. President, I yield the way.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 44th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise today to honor the life and memory of Ms. Imogen Boyd. Ms. Boyd died earlier this year. She was born on November the 6th, 1947. She was a cherished member of the Eastlake YMCA and a member of First Baptist Church of Gresham Road in Atlanta. She and her family gave back annually by conducting a dinner at the Georgia Aquarium, and she also was a volunteer for the Georgia NAACP and the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade there in DeKalb County. A lot of work was done yesterday in her memory, but we have a resolution from the Georgia State Senate honoring her life and legacy. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I yield the way.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes the senator from the 35th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for allowing the Committee on the Interstate Corporation to hold its four hearings this year on the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021. And we had it from May to October of 2021, and we still need one more to do a wrap-up. But the American Rescue Plan Act, a once-in-a-lifetime federal safety net for recovery from the coronavirus pandemic and its negative impacts on Georgia's diverse taxpayers and all government and private industry infrastructures. The four hearings provided a well-networked and reliable official statewide sounding board, related social media platforms, from the chambers of commerce from all over 159 counties, elected county and city officials, faith-based and educational, healthcare and mental health professionals, youth and recreation, and lost learning, full circle, to hear, to mitigate, and record both statewide taxpayer and neighboring states of the southern region. The struggle as well as best practices for dealing with the unprecedented health, economic, and institutional service delivery crisis. Now, Government Kemp's three committees were established after our second hearing, and it was for the purpose of proposal, proposed reviews related to broadband, infrastructure, and water and sewer. Also, it included our committee members, some of them, on the Interstate Corporation, our vice chair, and some of our other leadership. So this organizational development will provide these new committees to input on the hearing experiences. I'm sure that they will also be a significant resource for the response to the needs of these areas as the federal funding is allocated. It's been our task to impart information regarding this once-in-a-lifetime federal safety net for the negative impact of the deadly coronavirus. We're moving forward to provide insights from the Committee on Interstate Corporation Hearing in the continued statewide oversight process. It's my strong belief that there must be an effective outreach, navigation, information protocols, and evaluations related to the federal allocations beyond the auspices of the targeted areas of the appointed committees. Navigators to answer title-funded programs, questions to answer taxpayers about Georgia and the use of these federal dollars. So historically disenfranchised communities of businesses, churches, institutions, et cetera, have been placed in operation, and the last two years, and no longer, they are registered. And so, with underserved means to support for projects in their respective communities, fully established, enabled to address the need recovery of loss and limited access from COVID-19, which broaden the inequitable. There's a need to continue this advisory council, even if it is not under the Interstate Corporation for Network and Assistance and Outreach, because hundreds of people from all 159 counties attended these meetings. And to this end, the resounding void realized through the hearings, state tours, the community forums, and broad board presentations across the state remain as of today that the state of Georgia, like all other states in the USA, must be ever mindful of the mandate in President Biden's executive order number 13985 of that HR 1319 that established the ARPA. So fiscal recovery of COVID-19, aptly titled, "Advanced Racial Equality and Support for Underserved Communities by the Federal Government." So we ask that we concentrate on this money, that's our tax dollars, that is available, and it ended for people to put applications in on, yeah, I'm wrapping up, I'm in slow motion, but we want to see if they will extend that or have a second tier, because it's already ended, and the money does not stop until December 31st of 2024. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for listening, everyone. This is your dollars.
Chair recognizes the Appropriations Chairman for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, as you know, it's about six weeks until Christmas, and this body has made foster care and taking care of children who are in state custody and looking for adoption, one of our priorities for many years now. And one of the things you have done is you have joined with your colleagues here, we haven't joined across the hall with the House yet, but maybe we should, with adopting kids for Christmas. And we're going to do that again this year, and my office is going to try to head it up again. We've got the list, if that's, if there's anyone that, if you'd like to be involved, please swing by my desk today so I can get your name. The, you can pick the child who you'd like to sponsor. Just to let you know, the progress we are making on foster care in Georgia, when we started this about four years ago, we had roughly 15,000 children that were in foster care. As of yesterday, we had below 11,000 in state foster care custody. And so that's a tribute to the actions that this body has taken, and our colleagues across the hall have taken as well. So if you'd like to be involved in helping sponsor a particular child this Christmas who's in state care and foster care, please just come see me at my desk, and I'll make sure I get your name. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield the way.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 13th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise today to tell you, you know, some things we do in life, we may not get right, some things we do in life, we may get wrong. And we usually have to, you know, look back at ourselves and say, you know, how can we better ourselves? Well, I did something right in my life. I have a great privilege to introduce to you my daughter Jade here with us today. Jade's here, and she's here to talk to lobbyists about possibly lobbying here next year in the Capitol. So I just wanted you all to meet Jade, no shoes here, and I'm very proud of her, I did something right. Yield the way, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 36th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise to bring to your attention recent news about Georgia's utilization of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, federal program, to assist tenants and landlords who are suffering setbacks as a result of the COVID pandemic. Some of you may have seen some articles that appeared recently. We have ways to go here in Georgia to move our money out into our communities and into the hands of those who are qualified and eligible. It's been said, based on the numbers, that Georgia's 43rd in the country of the states moving their money from the feds out into the communities. And we've got a huge state, 11 million people and growing, 159 counties, great needs all across our state, great needs in each of our districts. And the Department of Community Affairs is responsible, is charged with administering the program to distribute the funds. So given that we have only spent 9% of the initial 552 million from this program, we're not meeting the threshold set by the U.S. Treasury Department. A plan was due this week, Monday, I believe it was, to, for states that are behind, to submit proposals for how they're going to address this, and how they're going to move the money out into the communities. And I've certainly not seen that plan, I have to get with the commissioner. They did a briefing the other day, a half-hour briefing on what was going on, and Georgia has been shifting and changing its, seeking to expand the people who are recipients of this potentially by streamlining more of the application process. That is a good thing, and the proposal that was due to the Treasury Department this week from all the states that are behind, we're not alone in that, lays out plans and ways that they're going to move to address it. And of course, we don't want to see a situation where there's a, where we have to send back money to the federal government because we didn't move it out in our programs. We have high needs. We're one of the states that has a high number of rental constituents, and that's why we are getting special attention on this. So we need, I would just advise all of us going home, stay in touch with the department, see what the status is in your county. Now, Henry County has moved out 100% of their funds. Fulton County has moved out 100% of their funds. Yes, Henry County, Senator from the 17th. And the City of Atlanta has moved the funds with due speed and is, I think, 90%. So it can be done, and we all know the bureaucracy that exists to do things in our counties and at the state level, and just having, coming together with the desire and the will to put a plan together that gets this money into our communities is the smart thing for all of us to be doing, working with the Department of Community Affairs, and learning ourselves, there's a chart, how each county is doing, how each political subdivision is doing in this regard. And we all know that we have landlords who depend upon their rent, and when that, when the rent is not coming in, they are left in the hole. Our local economies are left in the hole. And certainly, the people who are facing evictions are in a bad spot. We don't want to see an explosion of evictions across our state. None of us want that for our constituents and in our communities. And the real take-home message for all of us is that when this federal dollars, these federal dollars flow through and get into our communities, that money is then put to good use for our economy. That's in the interest of the state's economy, of each of our local economies. And so I urge all of us to seek information, understand what you can do and I can do in our particular counties and cities, to be an assistance to this, to spread the word, and to support the Department of Community Affairs, who is, who have already come up with some ways to make the program more available and accessible. Plenty of detail, but I just urge us to go home with that being on your to-do list and working with the department to see that we don't have to send money back to Washington that should be in our local economies, and should be providing relief to our landlords and our tenants. Thank you so much for your attention.
You have a consent calendar of privilege resolutions before you. Does any senator wish to remove a resolution from the consent calendar? Is there objection or adoption of the resolutions on the consent calendar? The chair hears none, and the resolutions are adopted. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? For what purposes, the senator from the 54th rise?
Yes, Mr. President, I just, I rise to excuse the senator from the 52nd.
Without objection, the senator from the 52nd is excused. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? The chair sees none. The chair recognizes the Majority Leader for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent that House Bill 7 EX and House Resolution 3 EX be engrossed.
Mr. Secretary, will you read both captions, please?
House Bill 7 EX by Representative Knight of the 130th and others, a bill to be entitled an act to amend Title 48 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated relating to revenue and taxation so as to revise the terms, quote, "Internal Revenue Code," close quote, end quote, "Internal Revenue Code 1986," close quote, and thereby incorporate certain provisions of the federal law into Georgia law and for other purposes. House Resolution 3 EX by Representative Bonner of the 72nd and others, a resolution ratifying Governor Brian P. Kemp's executive order numbers 5.10, 21.2, 5.14, 21.1, 5.21, 21.1, and 5.28, 21.3, suspending the collection of motor fuel and diesel fuel taxes and for other purposes.
The Majority Leader has moved to engross House Bill 7 EX and HR 3 EX. Is there objection? There is objection. The chair recognizes the Majority Leader to speak to his motion. He waves. Chair recognizes the Minority Leader to speak to her objection. She waves. Does any other senator wish to rise to speak for or against the motion to engross? The chair sees none. The question is on the motion from the Majority Leader to engross HB 7 EX and HR 3 EX. All those in favor of the motion to engross will vote yea. Opposed, nay. The Secretary will unlock the machine. The Secretary will unlock the machine. On the motion, the yays are 30, the nays are 19, and HB 7 EX and HR 3 EX are engrossed. We're now going to move on to the rules calendar. Mr. Secretary, can you please read the caption of House Bill 7 EX?
House Bill 7 EX by Representative Knight of the 130th and others, a bill to be entitled an Act to amend Title 48 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated relating to revenue and taxation so as to revise the terms, quote, Internal Revenue Code, close quote, end quote, Internal Revenue Code of 1986, close quote, and thereby incorporate certain provisions of the federal law into Georgia law and for other purposes. The Senate Committee on Finance recommends this bill be passed. Senator Huffstetter, the 52nd District Chair.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 4th to present the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all, as we all know, the purpose of, purpose of this bill is for us to comply with changes that's made, made with the 1986 Revenue Tax Code. And those changes came about as a result of, I think, as the Senator said earlier, with the passage of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. So therefore, because of that being passed, the Georgia code has to be amended to comply with that. So why are we doing this today instead of, said in January? If you recall, last session, we, we had a situation where a bill was passed in December and we, the tax, we didn't amend the code until February of this year, which put a lot of people in limbo as far as filing their tax return. By passing this bill today, this will allow over 200,000 people joint tax returns going to file their tax return on time. So, Mr. President, I ask for favorable passage of this bill.
You have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Does any other Senator wish to speak for or against the measure? The chair sees none. Is there objection to agree in the report of the committee which is favorable to the passage of the bill? The chair hears none. The report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none and the main question's ordered. Questions on the passage of the bill? All those in favor vote yea. Opposed, nay. The Secretary will unlock the machine. Apparently, they were happy with your presentation. For what purpose does the distinguished Senator from the 53rd rise?
I have a parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't it true that a lot of us thought that was just a point of personal privilege? We didn't really realize he was presenting the bill.
That's for each and every member to determine on their own. On the passage of the bill, the ayes are 49, the nays are 0. This bill having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed. I'm confused as to the excitement, but we'll, we'll ask later. I think I have a little, I think I have an idea. Mr. Secretary, can you please read the caption of House Resolution 3 EX?
House Resolution 3 EX by Representative Bonner of the 72nd and others, a resolution ratifying Governor Brian P. Kemp's executive order numbers 5 point 10, point 21, point 2, 5 point 14, point 21, point 1, 5 point 21, point 21, point 1, and 5 point 28, point 21, point 3, suspending the collection of motor fuel and diesel fuel taxes and for other purposes. Senate Committee on Finance recommends this bill, this resolution do pass. Senator Huffstetter, the 52nd District Chair, that completes the order.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 45th to present the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to present House Resolution 3 EX. It's a resolution that's part of Governor Kemp's agenda for this special legislative session. This resolution ratifies the, what we voted on in this chamber last week. The language has not changed. It's been determined by the Governor's office that the same LC number to ratify this resolution must take effect. And it's following the, simply following the Colonial Pipeline's cyber attack. Governor Kemp declared a state of emergency, suspending all motor fuel and diesel fuel tax from May 10th through June 2nd. If the Georgia General Assembly does not ratify this resolution, it would, the Department of Revenue would face a unprecedented circumstance and would be forced to collect these taxes from the distributor, which would eventually trickle down to the consumers. Mr. President, if there's no questions, I yield the will.
You have a question. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 6th for a question.
Will the Senator yield?
Yes.
Senator, can you explain to me how suspending the collection of the gas and motor fuel tax helped to alleviate the fuel shortage?
It, it was because of, it was my understanding that the reason that, that they suspended the motor fuel tax because of pricing, the price of motor fuel was going up drastically.
With, with the Senator yield?
Yes.
With respect to that, couldn't there have been actually efforts to make sure there wasn't price gouging with respect to fuel as opposed to suspending the tax?
The Senator knows of what she speaks.
Will the Senator yield?
Yes.
You just indicated that if we don't ratify this, that then the Department of Revenue will be in, in an unprecedented position where they'll have to go back and actually collect that tax. Is that what you said?
Yes, that's correct.
And isn't that because that the Governor did not have the authority to actually suspend the collection of the tax at the time that he did it?
No.
He did not have the authority?
No, he had the authority.
Okay. So one last question? Then why do we have to ratify this? His actions?
Because if, if we don't ratify it, then the Department of Revenue would have to go back and collect those taxes.
Because he didn't have the authority? Thank you, no more questions.
He had the authority.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 50th, or from the, recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Does the Senator yield?
Yes.
Isn't it not true that the Governor does have the authority during the Emergency Act to take short-term action to alleviate the issue that was going on with the understanding that at the next time of convening within the General Assembly, that we ratify his action?
Yes, that's true.
And is it not true that what you're doing today is trying to prevent an increase in fuel prices to every consumer of petroleum across the entire state of Georgia regardless of which district they live in?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You have no more questions.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 6th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just for clarification's sake, this specifically comes under 38 dash 3 dash 55, 51. And specifically with respect to emergency, states of emergency, the Governor's power is, is much more, is much smaller, let's just say that, in terms of what he can do. And it's laid out very specifically. So unlike other kind of broader powers of emergency that the Governor has, in particular with an emergency power, he really doesn't have the power to do that. That's why we're here to ratify it. That's it. I just think that this body, especially after coming out of the pandemic, just needs to be a lot more careful in terms of delegating its power to the executive. Thank you.
You have no questions. Does any other Senator wish to speak for or against the measure? The chair sees none. Is there objection to agree in the report of the committee which is favorable to the adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none. The report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none and the main question's ordered. Questions on the adoption of the resolution? All those in favor vote yea. Opposed, nay. The Secretary will unlock the machine. On the adoption of the resolution, the ayes are 49, the nays are 1. This resolution having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore adopted. Want to make a quick note here that we're going to pause for just a couple of minutes. We're actually printing the adjournment resolution, the revised adjournment resolution, and we're going to put it on all of your desks. We expect, it's already completed, we're just getting the printers fired up, and it should be on everyone's desk shortly. So we're just going to stand at ease just for a moment, and then we'll become, we'll come back to order.
[laughter]
Senate will come back to order. Senate will come back to order, come back from being at ease. How does that sound? Just give you a quick update here. So, there was a technical flaw with the LC number on the adjournment resolution. They're cleaning it up now. They're going to start to distribute it across the desks. So, we've already got the draft done that's got the exact adjournment resolution. I'm going to go ahead and recognize the Majority Leader to present it so that as soon as it starts to get distributed across the floor, the Minority Leader has a copy of it, so she's looking it over. He's going to explain it, and then we'll go ahead and take the vote. So, Chair recognizes the Majority Leader to explain the adjournment resolution. Oh, I went out of sequence for a second. Mr. Secretary, can you please read the caption?
Senate Resolution 48 EX, a resolution relative to meetings and adjournment of the General Assembly and for other purposes.
Now, the Chair recognizes the distinguished Majority Leader, who went back and got a sip of coffee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is maybe the most difficult three-day adjournment resolution that we've ever had in the chamber. What we're doing, if you remember when we did the counter to start with, we had during Monday through Friday, I know that y'all already know this, but I'm trying to stretch this out a little bit so the bill can get here to y'all. So, when I was 12...
Just for a point of reference, they're handing it out now. So, can you go up to where you were 16?
Okay, 16.
60.
Oh, I'm not there yet. So, all this, what you're getting in here is that we're going to be in tomorrow, you already knew that, that was part of the original resolution. But the original resolution did not account for any weekend days. The House will be in on Saturday. So, it adds that Saturday for them so they can be in. And then on Monday, it allows for the President of the Senate and the Speaker to adjourn at a time determined, sign and die, or we can have all y'all come in and vote for sign and die on Monday. So, I would prefer not to. That is the first time you've said no on one of. So, what I would, I ask y'all to support this. All you're doing is saying we're going to adjourn at, on Monday, but tomorrow would be this chamber's last day because of the sequencing of the, of two days last week. Any questions?
You have no questions.
I yield the well.
Does any other Senator wish to speak for or against the measure? The chair sees none. Is there objection to agree in the report of the committee which is favorable to the adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none, and the main question's ordered. Questions on the adoption of the resolution, all those in favor, vote yea. Opposed, nay. The Secretary will unlock the machine. On the adoption of the resolution, the yeas are 48, the nays are 0. This resolution, having received the requisite constitutional majority, is therefore adopted. The Chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate stand adjourn until 10:00 a.m. on Friday, 19th November, 2021 pursuant to House Resolution 2 EX.
Mr. Secretary, do you have any announcements?
The Rules Committee will meet upon adjournment in 4:50 at the Capitol.
Just to highlight that, the Rules Committee will meet after adjournment. Any Senators wish to make an announcement? The Chair sees none. The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Friday, November 19, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, and the Senate stands adjourned.